Do you have a question for the Board of Education, Ms. Nor? For the local committees?
Mrs. Dacre.
Here.
Dr. Boucher, of Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Chester.
Yes.
Mr. Judd Teal.
Here.
Mr. Nor.
Here.
Dr. Karmenter.
Here.
Vice President Days.
Here.
And President Carmen.
For all eyes with a nice blue, that was just in the book.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which we stand, one nation, united in this struggle for the liberty and justice of our people.
In accordance with public law 231, this speech is provided to the press in Galway Hatch Municipal Building on January 23, 2020. We have the approval minutes for September 24 for your meeting, and September 24 for the executive session. Do it second. Do it second. The board members say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Exclusions.
Aye.
And do it.
I would like that there were a lot of the sounds, the doggone way, the best way. The last week, we serve as a substitute teacher to a woman around our schools, and you'll help out the education, the foundation of their money.
Do it in the side seat. Do you have a further comment?
Before we go with that, I think the motion should end before the meeting is on September 21 on September 24. I think the former president.
You guys said, we just had a motion to approve the matter for September 24, the meeting is on September 21. I think that's all. Okay, is there any public comment for start? Read communications.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you Vice President Days. I will pass this around to the board members as a note of appreciation from Ms. Carol DeRyder, math teacher at GTMS, expressing gratitude to the board administration for the recognition and flower arrangement celebrating her milestone anniversary, 50 years, with the school district.
Presentations.
Yes, first we will have Mrs. Elko, administer the oath of office to our new board member for the vacancy, Dr. Bill Nor. Aye.
Aye.
Good. So. Please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, and please, I hope you do.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
Aye, and please, I hope you do.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
A member of a Board of Education.
A member of a Board of Education.
And I'm not disqualified.
I'm not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to law.
Pursuant to law.
To law. And not disqualified due to conviction.
And not disqualified due to conviction.
Of a crime or offense.
Of a crime or offense.
Listed in law.
Listed in law.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right there. Congratulations.
Yes, sir, congratulations.
Thank you. For the next presentation, I will be using the PowerPoint. Good evening again, everyone. And this particular presentation is the Student Safety Day System, SSDS, for reporting period two. This particular report is required by the State of New Jersey two times per year. And so obviously, the reporting period happens the first half of the school year and the second half. And then in the next timeframe, you must give a public presentation. And I would like to thank, and her name should actually be in the big letters, Mrs. Christine Burgess, who is, in addition to being one of our Directors of Student Services, is also our district's anti-bullying coordinator. And she put together this presentation based on her work with all of the schools and the data that they submit. So as I mentioned, this is required by law. And this report includes violence, vandalism, and HIB. There are several types of data, particularly in the area of HIB, that you need to report, including what you have done as a school district to educate students and staff. As you can also see, it also involves other acts such as use distribution and possession of alcohol or other drugs. So for each category, we need to tell the number of incidents. And when you look at the explanation of violence, I know it can be a little frightening, but I want to say that is how the state defines violence. It does not mean that we had every one of those kinds of acts. We did have some fights. And we did have a simple threat or assault. We can see from January to June, there were 19 incidents. I do want to remind you that there are over 3,300 children in this school district. And in the school that tends to be the most challenging in this area as our children get older, the middle school has over 750 students. So while we are concerned by any act like this, the number is, when we consider the volume of day-to-day interactions of students, it is a very small number. Vandalism, we did not have any acts during that report period. Again, you can see the definitions that would have applied. Next is substance abuse. And this includes possession, sale, or distribution. Or it also is if we suspected that a student was under the influence and either went for exam, and that was confirmed, or the parent-child did not cooperate and it was refused. In this particular reporting period, we only had one incident. Again, one too many, but if we think of the volume of children, we are glad to see such a low number. The next category is weapons. And again, you can see the definition from the state. And this also would be possessing, trying to distribute, or using. There were no incidents during this reporting period. Then, if you look at this definition, any other student offense, or incident, or behavior that resulted in, you can see the phrase disciplinary removal for at least one half of the day. Obviously, the thing that most commonly comes to mind is an out-of-school suspension. And so from January to June, there were 106 incidents. And I do need to remind you that there are things on our student code of conduct that result in a removal that are not violent acts. For example, gross disrespect or insubordination to a staff member, particularly if it is a repeat offense. We do try, in our revised code of conduct, to avoid out-of-school suspension because we believe as much as possible the children do belong in school. We now move into a major section of the report that is based on HIB. And while we all have our good old-fashioned definitions of what bullying means, the State of New Jersey has a very specific definition of HIB. I am certainly not going to read this to you, but you can see it is a very detailed definition. So every school in the district has to have a school anti-bullying specialist. In our school district, HIB concerns are investigated by the anti-bullying specialist in conjunction with a school administrator. I want to remind you, especially when you look at the middle school, you might be saying, Mrs. White is not at a system principal here anymore. That's because this was for last year, as well as Mr. Power. And so remember, this is last year's information. You can also see that Pomona, we do not have an anti-bullying specialist because it is all preschool. So if there was a HIB report at Pomona, one of the other counselors would be, were assigned to work with Dr. Gross. And that's an example of something that Mrs. Burgess would help coordinate. So now we have if-HIB incidents by report category. And so in this section, it is alleged, which means someone submitted a concern that they believed a HIB incident took place, but when the investigation was done, it was not determined to meet the state's definition, or it was originally found to be a HIB, and the board, it was not found to be a HIB, and the board affirmed that, or if the board rejected that. So there were 17 alleged. Next, we have confirmed. And once again, it was investigated, it was found to be a HIB, meeting the state's definition, and was then affirmed by the Board of Education. And again, this was report period two. We do know that we went into a closure in March, although I will say we did have one or two incidences that did happen virtually and were handled as required. So in looking at HIBs, and remember, these are the confirmed ones, we do analyze what was the nature or the basis from the definition. And you could see up the four, two of them were based on race or color, and two were on other distinguishing characteristics. And you might ask, what is that? Well, it's just about anything that make, on the victim's side, they may feel that they were mistreated according to the definition, and it was something particular about them. So what kinds of disciplinary measures are enacted? This really depends on the situation. And so in determining discipline for a HIB, we also look at the other incidences detailed on our student code of conduct. And just like the regular code, the more serious the incident, or if it's a repeat offense, the more significant the consequence is. One of the things we believe, and this is true of our entire code of conduct, that it is not just about consequences, but we want to help students learn from these experiences. We've done training and work and restored practices. And so in addition to consequences, other measures are taken to support the victim, but as well as the bullet on both sides of the situation. We also have to report what was done to reduce HIB. And so you can see that top category is training. So very often, this is done with staff in general, in small groups. It really depends on the needs identified by the school safety team. And then what types of programs? These could be assemblies, classroom lessons, things of that nature. And I will say that last year, Mrs. Elko, who did do a training for our school safety teams during our winter staff development day, and she's actually, this month, will be doing a training for all of our administrators and anti-bullying specialists. So that is the presentation. I will be happy to respond to any questions or comments. Mrs. Chester asked if the incidents we did, how, were they mainly before March? And yes, they were. So you would think from whatever date in January we returned after break through, I think approximately March 17. As I've said, I believe there was one alleged HIB and maybe one confirmed when we were in the virtual setting. I know Mr. Karmenter's getting late, so I want to thank Mrs. Burgess and all the administrators and anti-bullying specialists involved.
Do you have a question, Mr. Nor? Superintendent.
Thank you. First item is Mrs. Elko's report.
Good evening, everybody. This month, we've been working with the administration on student matters, contractual matters, and employment matters.
Thank you. For the restart plan implementation update, I just want to pick some highlights. Today, we began the fifth week of the 2020-2021 school year. That means we have completed one month of school. And not surprisingly, there have been challenges. We know we had some technology bumps, and we have made great progress, and we're still working our way through them. You know, we got new patch cuts in, it helped a lot. Families have been distributed. The new laptops for teachers arrived, and that really helped with the Zooms. In addition to that, the tech staff is very active. And that is through technical services and our computer lab teachers at the various schools in really monitoring during the day what is happening, adjustments to access points, hard by running if necessary. There really is a team effort to help ensure that on what we can control, our end, that that is working. We continue to learn about and work on use of OnCourse. And there's a lot of individual support for staff. And even when families have requested assistance, whether through the telephone, or via Zoom, or even a couple in person where families asked for help in understanding how to use the system. The district pandemic response team met today. And the focus of that meeting was on how we are doing the implementation of the health and safety protocols aspect of our restart plan. And this was the area that people were most worried about, returning to school. And it was very positive because there was quite a bit of really good feedback. And it really is credit to everyone, the children, the staff, everything from what we're all doing right now, wearing masks, social distancing, using a hand sanitizer, all of those different procedures that a lot of time and energy went into. All of the efforts that go into documenting data if someone shows symptoms, results of tests. We have reported out two positives. Letters were sent, one at Smithville and one at Pomona. And I'm pleased to say, because of the protocols being followed, that it did not lead to multiple people being infected. And that is really so important. And again, the feedback was very positive. The nurses, oh my goodness, they are doing a tremendous job in collaborating with one another and speaking to the Department of Health when they need to, talking to our district doctor. Obviously, the cleaning and disinfecting is a really important part of this as well. And I do have to say that the children are doing a tremendous job, those that are in person. We really could not be more pleased with that. Each school also has a pandemic response team. And they will be meeting as a follow-up to the district meeting to debrief at the school level how they believe things are going. One of the things that was discussed at our meeting today, and this was sent to staff and families today, I did send it to the board as well, is that our region of New Jersey, a largest state, has moved from that lowest level of risk, green, again, low, to the next level, which is yellow or moderate. And on the positive side, with the health and safety protocols that we have in place, we can remain open in our hybrid setting. Remember, we have about a third of the children learning virtually, and then the other two-thirds are divided into two cohorts other than some situations such as self-contained special education children. But our class size in person is low, and that really is tremendous help. One of the reasons we put the update out is because when the risk level changes, what happens in terms of when someone just demonstrates symptoms, that is a different protocol that the nurse has to follow, there's a different cleaning and disinfecting protocol. And so we took time, after Mrs. Burgess worked with the nurses, to review that with the district pandemic response team, and then sent that information out to staff and families. I should note, if you are not familiar with the risk levels, there are four. Yellow, excuse me, green, yellow, orange, and red. And we stayed in the green for quite a few weeks. And then just last week, we were notified, I'll just switch to yellow, and we're hoping we can stay stable or return back to green. Obviously, we are studying what would happen if there was a movement to the orange level. I know we will be talking about that at our county meetings with all the superintendents as well. In terms of staff updates, as I mentioned, staff members did receive the health update. They also received information about travel, and particularly with all of the upcoming breaks and holidays, that reminder about current team list and how that would affect them as an employee as well as the school district. There's a lot of work going on in the certificated staff world, the ISO, the teaching, and counseling, and child study team evaluations, and leading and managing, all the things we normally do. We also have to do other state mandates. And so certificated staff are working on their required student growth objectives. And I recently, this afternoon and last Wednesday, facilitated meetings with our district evaluation advisory committee to talk about what would it look different in the observation process this year for both virtual and hybrid settings. In terms of family updates, in addition to the health updates sent home today, there was a lot of other detail. Both reminders to families about the expectations for students and how they can help our teachers and administrators make all of this work. And we also shared with families the information that was given to teachers, reminding them and clarifying any questions about what should be live or synchronous versus asynchronous. And we really think it's important that everyone understands what the expectations are. We also let families know that virtual back-to-school nights are being planned. And there was this wonderful program that was brought to our attention that they are using. And so the, those involved with back-to-school night will be working after school to put those virtual presentations together. And then we will announce to families when those links will be posted. We will be also working on parent teacher conferences. That schedule has been adjusted in light of the fact that we opened later than usual and the fact that, you know, the school year is taking longer to get into its full swing this year. They will be individual, and we are looking at whether we will be offering options via Zoom and in person. And, but they will be individual, and they will be live or synchronous if they are via Zoom. One of the things I did write to the board in Friday's bulletin was a concern that has been expressed by our teachers and other staff. I know in Mrs. Nixon's business administrative roundtables, as well as my roundtables, is the fact that the state gave us a lot of requirements to reopen. And I believe our staff and community has risen and met them. And the state continues to push at us with all of the same mandates and requirements and deadlines as if there wasn't a pandemic. And I'll be honest, it's creating a great deal of frustration because we want to put the bulk of our energies into educating the children. And it's compounded by the fact that the state is not always working in person and not always working full-time. So while there's a lot of mandates or requirements, there's not always someone to respond to the question. And so I really do believe, and I have suggested with all associations, really contact the state about this. And there are examples on the business side, on the educational side. And certainly, we believe in accountability and know there has to be expectations. But we do believe the state, be it the governor's office, the commissioner's office, the department of ed, need to understand what it takes to run school at this time. I mentioned in one of the town hall meetings, we are running four schools at every school. We are running a virtual school, we are running cohort A, cohort B, and then for those children who are coming in four days a week. And our staff is very dedicated to doing this for our children. So where we can get some help and support to lighten up or have a better understanding, we are seeking it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Annette, are the expectations for this teacher SGOs the same as in a normal school year? Which clearly, this is not.
Now, I will say, the state set us the same exact guidance as always. However, I will credit our administration. However, I will credit our administrative team, our principals, assistant principals, and directors. We made adjustments that we felt were fair to things like target scores and how you get the four, three, two, one. The directors, with the help of the TLFs and preschool master teachers, put a lot of information together to help teachers work on them. And last Thursday, instead of having faculty meetings, like we did on years, we gave teachers time to work on them. And we also reminded them that there is an adjustment period in February. Mrs. Avery, that's a perfect example of something I find kind of incredulous that the state did not reconsider that in place of current.
It's not a normal year in any sense. So why using normal practice from previous years, when the kids want school every day, instead of someone? It doesn't make sense. Ma'am, just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Jim?
I noted that in the mandatory protocol that they were going to raise, the possibility of the board to denounce some of these concerns to appropriate agencies, representatives, etc. And I would like to discuss how we do that. When it comes to my mind, it perhaps is a little, I mean, obviously, that's a deep front of the board on what's happening here. But I think that we should gather, people us together, pull together some sort of a volume and power that our staff has done to get us to this point. And two, the question why School Board Association, for example, is attracting the position on behalf of the difference. I'd also note that my first year on the board, local representatives, for example, should be there in the meeting room to meet with us. And I think requesting a meeting with that to hold this to their hand is a much more important thing. I'll throw that there as to how we accomplish this. I'd be more willing to sit on any form to do this, I think we should do it quickly. I do want to say that I think the motivation for this, and this gives the board an opportunity to not only support all of the good work, extraordinarily good work that has been done by our staff in bringing us to this point. We spent the entire summer listening and observing as our administrators there, our teachers pulled this together and watched it openly. I'm not saying this as comparison by any substantive way, but in comparison to the way that we've unfolded that we were a district that acknowledged that our kids needed to be back in school and had worked on getting our kids back in school as a service to them, a service to their parents, and a service for our community. Whilst the rest of you know, felt that that was not a good thing for their families. That's extraordinary, and two districts are doing it. We, the board, owe it to our staff, we try to step up on this side of it, to try to body to the chart. I think what the school districts are experiencing is something that anybody who faces with state agency or a county can't compare to. They tend to be operating remotely, they tend not to be responding. And the government, the state government is essentially turning to the districts and say, this is a mess, fix it. Or fix it, but they need the help. So again, kudos to our nurses, our custodial staff, our teachers, our administrators. What has been accomplished to date is nothing short of miraculous and considerably work in April, May, June, July. And the fact that the state, the Department of Education, which is charged with ensuring the level of success is even given in those areas which in my limited experience, it seems to be easily adjusted, is your appreciate your worst. So I think we should be doing something, this board is limited as it can, we need to do something this board.
So I would suggest, based on what Mr. Gentile is talking about, discussing, you have a few options. You can form a special committee, an ad hoc committee of the board if you wanted to, to meet and review these issues. From that, you could decide inviting a meeting with legislature. You could also do a resolution for the October board meeting, expressing concerns you have, and then send that resolution to whomever you would like to send it to. You could also do a letter to the board and have that approved at the October board meeting as well. In addition, you could request Sharon Seiler, who is the legislative liaison from the Jersey School Boards Association, to see if she could Zoom with you guys and do with the, whatever the group or the committee to meet prior to the October, the next meeting in October as well, to see what's out there from the school boards end. So there's a variety of things you can do. My first question is, is this something you would like to form a committee on? Or do you think it would fall into an existing committee you have?
I would suggest that I have a committee, a future that I would set.
I agree.
For the validation. I would want to serve, I mean, one item to serve.
That's great. And you do one more. So if that's what we would want to do, Mr. Days, you're acting as president today?
The problem is we need to be.
So you would just say that you were going to form an ad hoc committee?
I believe through October, to identify, I think, like faith in past, Senator Connor and someone who moved a roof, which he carried, they represent us. They've been very receptive of us in responding to the past several years.
So the purpose of the committee, just so we're all clear, is to address COVID-related issues directly related to school and the impact on the board, on the board of education. Break that to the topic we're going to address though.
I think addressing, as Avery said, addressing some of the protocol expectations that are normally expected in a, quote, "normal" year, be modified to reflect the realities that are efficient. Good idea.
So going for the record, you can say that Mr. Days has appointed Mr. Gentile, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Chester, and Dr. Permetter.
And like I said, we truly should reach out to our government representatives in any form of board.
And we need to contact one that I mentioned, who are obviously Dr. Day comes with me as well. So whatever we need. And I agree, I think the sooner you try to work on this issue the better, whoever you meet, and just keep pushing it over.
Thank you. I really appreciate this, and for on behalf of the entire staff. What I will do is I will tomorrow email the four of you with some potential dates so we can get a common meeting going, and, you know, Zoom does make it easier, we don't need to travel anywhere. And you can get going and then report back out to the full board. Thank you very much.
Sounds like a good plan. Okay, curricular discussion?
Thank you. Just one item this evening, students who are homeschooling.
So are these school board comment or public comment? Local? Oh, you can give a motion, I'm sorry. Local?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permetter? Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Richard Love?
Yes.
Dr. Billwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Norr?
Yes.
Vice President Days?
Yes.
Next, finally, the school board.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Nixon.
Thank you. Resolution one is to approve a bills list for October 12. Resolution two is to accept the 2021 Corona virus relief fund grant, and we now listed. Resolution three is to accept the 2021 non-public digital divide grant, and we now listed. Resolution four is to approve extra duty solutions. Resolution five is to approve on tech consulting. Resolution six is to approve nursing services plan for the 2021 school year. Resolution seven and eight are to approve the Kenyatta students. Resolution nine is to approve special education teachers for non-public and non-public funding. Resolution ten is to approve people who are university physicians as evaluative and consultive services. Resolution eleven is to approve itinerary services.
We have motion to approve items one through eleven?
Some of them.
Local please?
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. Norr?
Yes.
Dr. Richard Love?
Yes.
Dr. Billwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permetter?
Yes.
And Vice President Days?
Yes. So many meetings. That's amazing. We have so many meetings.
I've got a question. Item seven and number eight, the difference between the amount to which you accept based on the service provided?
The difference is by district and grade level.
We had facilities meeting last month in Raleigh. We're over the Arthurman and none of the school projects, because that's the goals. And I believe that they said last week the company was reported Arthurman running the pipes and electricity and everything under concrete wall. And so far, everything's been going good there, right? Problem is, they're getting a problem, having a problem getting the materials. Because of the pandemic that's going on, a lot of factors are not manufacturing along, we should be out of line. Do you mind everything as of tonight, I'm sure it's going? Hopefully, it doesn't last too much longer, but that's one of the problems with all projects, not just us. And as far as our roof is made, it's still building. We're still getting the permits, paperwork, and everything is being assembled, being completed. And we're supposed to have a groundbreaking joint, they say in three weeks or something. They hoped.
Yes, groups after things you would require permits.
Yeah, and they've been in touch with our facilities director and everything. Everything seems to be going well, not so good so far. Any questions, anything on that?
Thank you. Our next meeting is October 26 at 9:00 AM and 9:35 AM. Resolution one is to approve a draw from capital reserve that we had to give up.
Any questions, go ahead. Questions from the board? Any public comments? Local?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Richard Love?
Yes.
Dr. Billwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Norr?
Yes.
Vice President Days?
Yes.
Do we have any use for school facilities?
Yes, at this time, it remains suspended.
Next, personnel?
Thank you. Items one through eight are all leave positions. The staff member's name, position, school, the dates, and where to pay, benefits, et cetera, is all detailed. Resolution nine is to approve Alyssa Hoyt as the school counselor at GTMS. Resolution 10 is to extend Bernadette Rostel from part-time to full-time. Resolution 11 is for Genie Capalletti for a leave position. Resolution 12 is for Dana Gathers, I have to learn how to say her name, my apologies, Dana, for a first grade teacher position, a leave position. And then we have Cindy Ford as a full-time classroom assistant, leave position, and one additional substitute teacher.
We have motion to approve items one through 14 on personnel. Is there any more comment, questions? Any public comment? Any non-local please?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Richard Love?
Yes.
Dr. Billwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Norr?
Yes.
Vice President Days?
Yes.
Thank you. In this section, we have approvals for childcare staff for supplemental positions at the middle school. We are pleased that we will be doing co-curricular activities, held virtually at this time, but we are very pleased to be able to do this for our middle school students. We have an item for staff to attend a workshop once according LGBTQ youth. We have the members approval for our district evaluation advisory committee. I do have a minute correction under the administrative members, which should be Mr. Lightcap, not Mr. Garbit. We have approval of staff for Chromebooks setup and for district reopening preparations, add-on going for our nurses.
We have motion to approve items 15 through 20. Any board comment, questions, any public comment? Any non-local please?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Richard Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Billwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Norr?
Yes.
Dr. Permetter?
Yes.
And Vice President Days?
Yes, I will first turn to Dr. Permetter, who is the chair.
Thank you. The gifted talent policy was amended to mirror the provisions of the state and to reflect the complaint slash appeal process as available to parents. The procurement policy on food services was updated to match the state purchasing policies. The attendance policy, we modified quite a bit. There was a lot of detail added to reflect new state policies on attendance. And more detail was added to clarify student accesses and what constitutes excuse accesses. All the updates in this policy were changed relative to the Dallas district population. That concludes my report.
Any questions? We have motion to approve items or policies. On first reading, any motion?
Some of them.
Any questions again? We need a local?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Norr?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Richard Love?
Dr. Billwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Permetter?
Yes.
Vice President Days?
Yes.
Notice of public meetings?
Thank you. We do have another meeting in October on the 26th. And then we also have one meeting in November, 1 to 16th. And as noted, we will continue to plan for in-person meetings.
Any public comment this time? Any old visits from board?
We have a golf tournament on the 24th, and we made $13,000 profit. We had 5,000 people was included in that profit. I'd like to thank the island for working on the golf tournament, all in line with all our different meetings. And the results are, the golfing, the golfing, we had $60,000, they were not golfing very good. You know, we weren't able to, had a bid that they were looking actually to do really good.
Any more else, any old visits? New visits, we're going on board. Let's start, well, first, we'll go around, Dr. Blade. Eric, can you say so? We're going around for, any new visits, right, do you have to bring up, sir? You can start. Any questions, or anything? No? Public comment?
Well, like I said, welcome to Dr. Billwood. Thank you, which I know is for work.
I'd just like to say thanks to John Moore for all his hard work with the golf tournament because it is a lot of work. And it has consistently, year over year, made a substantial profit for the Ed Foundation, which goes to support the school district. As a case in point, this year, the Ed Foundation donated $50,000 for additional Chromebooks to the school district, and that would not happen without people like John, who worked very hard on that particular project. So John, go on, John Moore?
Can I get this one? Alexis?
Welcome to Dr. Bellwood. I go out of my own way to thank him for that. Mr. Norr, a hundred dollars, a major milestone for school board. I like to give work on the association for our sports and dedication to our schools. We need to be useful, they just want to get at us, et cetera. It is important to help staff, administrators, teachers, custodians, nurses, et cetera. This is, it may seem normal to them in the sense that this is their day and debt, but from the outside looking in, it is an amazing task, an amazing undertaking, and, uh, it is short.
That's your board.
I like the one. I'm young, I'm a little.
Okay, I'd also like to thank the school board. Any questions if anybody can go here and ask it? I want to thank John also for your involvement. And I'd like to thank the administration, all staff, civilians, people who are not meeting with people, everything, what we're doing for the school district, and what we're undergoing right now. They're doing a terrific job, they're keeping up, and so that it's all going soon so we get back to normal, because the kids, I think, need socializing with each other. Not just one, seeing each other in store or Zoom or anything. They gotta get together, it's all the best for the kids. Anyone else? No second session? Okay, a motion there? A little did say aye? Others? Give it up.